Okay, thank you for your patience. We're ready.
All right, thank you, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting for Friday, February 28th, 2025. Ms. Bennett, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Gladney.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Jackson Jennings.
Present.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Galladay.
Here.
Commissioner Beach.
Here.
Commissioner Simmons. We have a quorum and you can proceed.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three, public comment. The board is holding an in-person public, a meeting for in-person public comments today. Is there anybody that submitted for in-person public comment? Anyone there?
No, there is none.
Okay, I believe we have a presentation, Toby. When did we want to do that? I'm not, I'm not sure when. Were we going to do that at your report?
Good. No, we're ready to go right now.
Okay, please proceed with that.
Okay, yes. So I want to welcome to the microphone Ms. Eldridge. Ms. Eldridge is a member representing the Missouri City Clerks and Financial Officers Association. Ms. Eldridge, will you please come forward and address the board?
Yes, as mentioned, my name is Megan Eldridge. I am here on behalf of the Missouri City Clerks and Finance Officers Association. I am currently the city administrator and city clerk with the city of Clarkson Valley, and I am here to recognize Myra Bennett for receiving her master municipal clerk designation from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. This organization has more than 15,000 members who represent various governmental entities across the United States and Canada. There are 49 U.S. associations and nine Canadian associations. With constantly changing statutes and regulations, it's important for clerks to continue with their education and professional development, and a combination of experience and education is required to reach this certification level. We also want to thank you for supporting Myra and allowing her to take time to meet these requirements toward achieving her certification. So Myra, on behalf of the Missouri City Clerks and Finance Officers Association, we want to congratulate you on achieving this milestone and also present you with a certificate of recognition and wish you good luck on your future endeavors.
And now, for total embarrassment, we'll do a quick picture if you.
Get Toby over there.
Thank you, Chairman, very much, and thank you, Board of Commissioners. We worked very hard to try to be prompt and move through these very thick agendas, but part of that is the machine that makes this work and the machine that makes this work right now is there's many members of this, but the one sitting to my left, and Myra Bennett and her professionalism in moving this board and keeping them organized and making everything work. She is A-plus, high-ranked professional in the organization. Very grateful to have her. Thank you for your time this morning. Chairman?
Thank you, Myra, and I thank you, Toby. And Myra, congratulations on that distinction. That is, that is a great honor, and we are all grateful to have you assisting us. And I apologize for going a little bit out of order this morning. I knew that we didn't have, I think, any public commenters, but I just wanted to put out there that, you know, we do have the availability for folks to do that for up to three minutes if they submit the cards and get the time reserved. But again, thank you, Myra, and thanks for all that you do.
Thank you, Chair.
Did we receive any in-person comments? I mean, excuse me, phone-in person comments? Did we receive any, any online comments?
Yes, Chair, we received 10 public comments for today's meeting. Those comments were distributed to the board and staff and are included in today's meeting materials. They will also be included in the minutes from today's meeting.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number four, that's a good transition. The minutes for the November 15th, 2024 Board of Commissioners open meeting have been provided for review by the board. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If not, I will entertain a motion and a second to approve the minutes.
So moved.
A second. I heard a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? The motion is passed. Moving on to item number five, report of the President. Mr. Roach, do you have a report?
I do. I have a brief one, Chair. Thank you. So every once in a while, we do like to highlight the incredible skills of our frontline workforce, and one of those is, is there is a national competition that's known as the bus rodeo that our teams will be competing in very shortly. But one of the fun things is that we often, and you've seen maybe Chuck and myself, try to navigate a 35-to-40-foot multi-ton bus through cones. Unfortunately, sometimes the cones don't survive, but for the first time in the organization, both my chief legal counsel and my chief financial officer had the pleasure of going through training yesterday. And although, yes, it gives us a moment of, of just being a little bit light and enjoying ourselves, I think there's a lot of TSMs who get a lot of pleasure at watching us kill a few cones. It also reminds us of who and what we are and the professionalism that these operators bring every day. They are the highest level of professionals. They look very sharp every single day. They represent their community and Metro Transit very, very well. And what we need to be sure is that they understand that they are respected all the way to the top of this organization, and that, and that dedication from my staff is evident. And quite frankly, sometimes it's a little fun. So I will encourage you to ask my chief legal counsel and my chief financial officer how it went yesterday, but most importantly, to show that respect of our frontline workforce and what they do. It's a really important aspect of having everybody understand, really, what is our frontline product. And speaking of that frontline product, I have asked for an extension of the loop trolley contract in front of you. This board was very careful and measured about what we would do with that contract. I made a commitment to everyone that we would cut down that asset so that it was operating within its means, that one of the things that we really do know how to do with these group of professionals at Metro Transit is we know how to run equipment. Chuck Stewart and his team knows how to run equipment, and they've been successful at getting that asset on the right track and living within its means. I think this is a great success, not only for Metro Transit and Bay State, but also for the region, where we've been able to take a troubled asset and get it to work. I respectfully ask for your consideration in extending that contract. We have lived up to the financial means test, and it's running, and it's doing pretty well. I am hoping that in the future, that's going to be one of those assets that everybody's very proud of, that they know, yeah, maybe they had a little bit of a bumpy start, but you know what? Works really nicely now. But also, and Brenda, I'll ask you to throw up a pie very quickly. Obviously, there's a lot of talk in the national news about what's going on with the change of administration. Look, let me just tell you, there's a change of administration every four years. So it is our job to professionally respond and be sure that we are taking those policy initiatives, whether they're executive orders, whether they are movements in federal funding, and respond to those and be sure that as an organization, we are protecting ourselves and being vigilant to really who is our ultimate customer. And our ultimate customer are the taxpayers of Missouri and Illinois. So we need to be sure that we have a continuity of service. So one thing that I wanted to bring up in this very important budget chart on that pie is you notice, from an operating standpoint, 94.4% of our operating budget is really locally based. So even though, you know, there's a lot of talk about federal funding, and it will have a very real effect, especially on the capital side, but we know that we can run buses and trains, right? There's no question that that's going to get done. One of the things that we have been talking about very, over the last several weeks, is to be sure that we're being responsive to any changes that we see on the federal side. So advancing every single grant that we can to be sure that we're getting that money in the door quicker, so that essentially our liquidity issues are addressed. That's simply what we have as far as the tasking in front of us. We need to be very vigilant about all of that. My staff knows this. Tammy Fulbright's very aware of it, and of course, our grant staff. We go over it regularly, and adjusting those strategies is what not only this board should expect, but also how we should execute. So note in that funding chart, only 5.6% of our annual operating is federally-based money. And in fact, that's a federal vehicle maintenance piece that we've already drawn down from the federal government. We're expecting it anytime now. So we'll be in good shape from an operating standpoint. On a capital standpoint, look, I, I can't, it's going to be a difficult few years. We're going to have to make those adjustments and look at every single capital project and see what the timing is concerned with all of them. Where before, maybe we would have had five capital projects out, it might make sense for us to only have two or three, based on the fundamental liquidity issues and to be sure what kind of funding flow we can expect from the federal government. But these kind of strategies, as far as being a little bit more conservative with our money, is right in line with, for instance, being sure that on an operating standpoint, every single year is vigilant and we're showing a trajectory that makes sense. And Tammy will make that presentation to you already. She has in, in detail in the, in the subcommittee meeting. But really, what's important is that we continue to adhere to that 1.5% growth rate every single year. That is the basis that allows us to go and ask for funding, not only from our three primary funders, the city, the county, St. Clair County, but also potential state, and then to federal. It's a big mix. We need to be sure how that mix works, and when there are changes to policy that come from any one of those funders, we need to be responsive. I welcome any questions along that line. Happy to get any calls from you. And I think that being sure that we're very detailed in those briefings, especially when it comes to subcommittee, as far as where our money is coming from, I think that's a tasking that's welcome. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Toby. Are there any questions, comments for Toby? Okay, I've got one just briefly. I wanted to thank him for that presentation, specifically the part that discussed the funding. I think we can all read the news, the newspapers, and see what's going on. I think it's imperative that our agency and our board stay on top of this, not just with the budget, but also with some of these projects we have coming in that have a significant federal component. And I know I'm preaching to the choir a bit because Toby and his staff are already on top of this, but you know, what happens if we have a big expenditure and we're counting on a third of the money from the federal government? In previous years and decades, we might have been able to, you know, essentially anticipate that money would come. Now, maybe we're not. So how do we plan for that? How do we stay ahead of it? You know, if there are issues, making sure that's raised to the board so we can address it. I think that's all being managed, but I'm grateful for this process and for this board, because I think we'll be able to get through it together, but it's definitely a different challenge. So I wanted to thank Toby and all of you. There are no further comments or questions on that. We will move on to item number six, which is the report of the Operations Committee. Commissioner Moore, do you have a report?
I do. Good morning, everyone. A virtual meeting of the Operations Committee was held on January 24th, 2025 at 8:30 a.m. The draft minutes of that meeting are included in the meeting materials today under item number six. The Operations Committee is recommending approval of nine items that are noted on today's agenda as Consent Agenda Item Number 10. A. Illinois Department of Transportation Intergovernmental Agreement for Southwestern Illinois Freight Railroad Network Analysis and Improvements Program, Resolution Number 1389. B. Parkway Interlocking Richmond Heights Turnout Design Professional Engineering Services for Signal System Design, Resolution Number 1390. C. Bus Air Purification System, Resolution 1391. D. Replacement of MetroLink Forest Park A and B Signal Houses at the Forest Park MetroLink Station, Resolution 1392. Item E. Contract Change Order, Communications Network East Cell Expansion, Resolution Number 1393. F. Contract Award, Public Safety and Security Services, Resolution Number 1394. G. Loop Trolley Services Agreement, Resolution 1395. H. 79th Street Retaining Wall Rehabilitation and Accompanying IGA Resolution 1396. I. 241 Transportation Development District, Resolution 1397. In addition, at the January meeting, there was an operations report and a workforce update was provided by Trinise Winters, Assistant Executive Director, Metro East Transit, and this concludes my report for the Operations Committee.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions for Commissioner Moore? Hearing none. Moving on to item number seven, the report of the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee. Commissioner Jackson Jennings, do you have a report?
I do. Good morning. A virtual meeting of the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee was held on January the 24th, 2025, immediately following the Operation Committee meeting. The draft minutes of that meeting are included in the meeting materials today under item number seven. The AFA Committee is recommending approval of two items, which are noted on today's agenda as Consent Agenda Item Number 10. J. Board Policy Revision, Charter 20, Chief Legal Counsel and Deputy Secretary of the Agency, Resolution Number 1398. K. Board Policy Revision, Chapter 50, Purchasing, Resolution Number 1399. In addition, the committee is recommending approval of Agenda Item Number 11, FY 2026 Draft Budget, Resolution Number 1400, plus Grant Resolution Number 1401 through 1407, which was presented by Executive Vice President and Chief Financial Officer Tammy Fulbright at the January meeting. Also, at the committee meeting, several informational items were presented, including Fiscal Year End 2024 OPEB Trust Valuation, 2024 Pension Plan Valuation Update, 2023 401K Plan Audit Results Update, Internal Audit Department Follow-Up Summary, Second Quarter, FY 2025, Internal Audit Department Status Report, Second Quarter, FY 2025, Internal Audit Department State Safety Oversight Status Report, Fourth Quarter Calendar Year 2024, Financial Statements, Treasury's Report, Treasurer's Safekeeping Report, and Procurement Report. Network services at headquarters were lost at 10:32 a.m., and due to the inability to reconnect, the meeting was adjourned at approximately 10:45. That concludes my report.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Moving on to item number eight, Report of Safety and Security Committee. Commissioner Simmons, do you have a report?
Chairman, Commissioner Simmons is traveling. He was hoping to be able to call in, so I don't think that we have him on the line. We might have him present for executive session to listen in.
Sounds good. We will move on then to item number nine, Adjustments to the Consent Agenda. Are there any adjustments to the consent agenda? Hearing none. Moving on to item 10, that there are no adjustments to the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as referenced in the committee reports, as outlined in the agenda. One question here, were any of, I don't think any of these were safety and security committee items. Doesn't look like it. No, they weren't. Okay.
No, Chairman.
I didn't want to reference something that wasn't referenced. Okay.
So moved.
Yep, so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passed. On to the FY 2026 Draft Budget. I will ask Toby Roach and Tammy Fulbright for comments.
Tammy, could you take this away?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. So I just wanted to briefly just talk a little bit and add to what Toby said regarding the budget. You know, our goal of 1.5% average growth is really about fiscal responsibility, and we are working hard to keep that goal, and we have done that over the last seven years. I just want to kind of talk a little bit of, you know, some of the things that impacted this budget, just briefly, just saying that, you know, one of the biggest pieces of our budget this year in the operating expense was related to the contract negotiations for our labor contracts, and that is part of what we needed to do as an agency, and we accomplished that. And as, as part of what we're seeing today, too, is some pressures that we've seen, you know, obviously due to inflation on parts and other types of labor that we're seeing in other contracts that we have. We've had some challenges and pressure related to our self-insurance. But with all that being said, our team has pulled together and we have worked together to accomplish a very sound budget moving forward, showing just 1.5% growth on that operating expense from the prior year. And so it's really the commitment of the entire team and this organization and through the leadership of the CEO that we are able to bring this budget to you today. And the one other thing I just wanted to mention about liquidity and about some of the things that we're seeing from a federal standpoint, is that we are in constant communication with the FTA. So as we are moving grants and those sorts of things forward, you know, we are keeping in touch with them and communicating. So as Mr. Roach mentioned, you know, we've already made movement on that $16 million for federal vehicle maintenance, and we should be seeing that any day. So I am, we are here today to ask for approval for the FY 26 Operating Budget, our three-year capital budget, our three-year tip, and the resolutions related to the grants for our budget. But I am happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding those things.
Any questions? Okay, if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve this item as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passed. Thank you. On to item number 12, the St. Clair County MOU Amendment, Resolution 1408. I will ask Toby Roach and Kathy Britton for comments.
Thank you, Chair. I have Kathy Britton on, on the line. My apologies for bringing this in late on the agenda, but it was a very important accommodation to St. Clair County Transit District. So appreciate your understanding in that. Kathy, can you give us just a brief explanation?
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. This is a request from St. Clair County, their insurers, to add insurance language to the memorandum of understanding that we have with them. It should be noted that in the past, we have just utilized the indemnity language in the MOU, and everything has worked well. But with their insurers, they would like us to evidence insurance for them, which we already currently have in place. So this is nothing that we've had to go and secure or anything, and so this is just to accommodate that and put this in the agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So this is just changing the agreement to reflect something that we're already doing?
Yes.
Okay. Any, any questions, comments, concerns on that? Okay, if there is no further discussion, I would entertain a motion and a second to approve this item as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passed. On to item 13, Mr. Roach, is there any unscheduled business?
I have none, Chair.
Moving right along, Operations Report. I would ask Chuck Stewart for comments.
Good morning, Commissioners. You have our workforce updates and our operations updates in your packages. The Operations Report was presented by Trinise Winters at your committee meeting, and since none of you reached out to me to tell me that you missed me, I assume that she did, she did an excellent job. I'd like to take this opportunity just to highlight some things that are going on right now, mainly some 2024 highlights. During 2024, we reached over 20 million passenger trips, the highest since 2020. So it shows that we are recovering, that our service is improving. Over that period of time, over the last year, we've increased frequency in over 34 bus routes, restored evening service in four bus routes. We have four new streamlined routes where passengers at one point had to transfer from one route to another to get to their destination. We've been able to streamline those. So we are basically moving toward a, a more efficient and effective service profile. As you know, we do service changes every quarter. We have another service change scheduled for March, and at that time, we will continue to make those improvements. So why have we been able to do that? We've been able to do that because we've been able to replenish our staffing. We've talked about the things that we've gone through over the past year in order to increase the number of bus operators, the $5,000 sign-on bonus, the improvements and benefits that you've so generously authorized. We've changed our training programs. We've basically revamped a lot of our operations in order to not only attract but retain additional bus operators. I've talked to you about the mentorship program. All of these things have led toward us being able to improve our staffing and therefore improve our, our service. In fact, over the past year, we've added over 285 new operators and mechanics to our team. We're still looking for mechanics. We're still hiring bus drivers, no doubt about that. We have a turnover that we have to, we have to keep the pipeline open, but we are still looking diligently for mechanics, and the $5,000 sign-on bonus is still in effect for mechanic hiring. I hope that during the committee meeting that Trinise introduced our new team members, Louis Lowry, who is our general manager of Paratransit, and Keisha Davis, Assistant General Manager of Metro Bus. It is very important that we do this type of hiring. These are the people that come into our organization with many years of experience at other transit properties, and they are certainly benefiting us in terms of the knowledge and the experience. and they are certainly benefiting us in terms of the knowledge and the experience that they are bringing to the table. I want to highlight a few things specifically about Call Ride. We've continued to report the improved performance that we're showing at Call Ride. We've continued to talk about the, the increase in the number of trips that we're offering over the last fourteen months or so. We've been able to go from five thousand rides a week to eight thousand in some cases. This is because we have improved our operation and our management of our teams. We talk about our denial rates, which have gone from over forty percent fourteen months ago to, to zero for the last four or five months. And we continue to have that kind of success in improving our Call Ride service. Operational upgrades are also taking place. We talked about the phone system upgrades. I think the key of the system that is showing great promise in further improving our service is the new spare system. This system is for reservations and dispatching. If you had an opportunity to read the comments that you got from the public comments this week, all ten of them are about Call Ride. Most of them start out with something that says, "Thank you for the things that you are doing to improve the service." I think the community is recognizing the success we are having in improving our Call Ride service. And then they say something like, "Well, you know, this spare thing, we see where you're going with that. Things are going well. Can you tweak this? Can you tweak that? Can you make this a little better? Can you give us some of these other bells and whistles?" And our Call Ride team is working diligently to do those things, and they are addressing these comments. When these comments come in, I share them with my team, and they reach out to the, to the people that have made the comments and make sure that they understand that we heard them and that we are doing the things that are necessary to improve the service. Another thing in your packet today is a memo from the St. Louis Metro Transit Accessibility Advisory Committee. This is a committee that we formed basically to get community input. There's, it's a fifteen-member committee. And basically, they, they're working with us to help to improve our Call Ride service. They're helping us to test our new systems. They're meeting six times a year. And I'd like to kind of quote something from the message that was sent to you today. This is from the chairman of this committee, Mr. Raymond Bishop. And he states, "We are a newly appointed committee with fifteen members and two metro employees. We meet every month, every other month, and our next meeting will be March twenty-first. Our first two meetings have been productive. As we have adopted bylaws and our mission statement, we have elected a new chairman, Mr. Bishop, and a vice chairman, Kristi Vertree. We have identified two high-priority topics we wish to address, and they are training and accessibility." That is fantastic. Those are the things that we are focused on as well. "We, as a committee, hope to help and guide Metro into having a good transit, as good a transit system as possible for those who have disabilities." Again, consistent, consistent with our goals and objectives. Please don't hesitate to reach out. The committee, to the committee, if you have questions, I always welcome your participation and encouragement. And that is a message to the board from this committee, and they will be probably on a monthly basis, or, or every board member, you will have a message from them. So this, that's, this is one of the things that we're doing, among other things, to make sure that the community is involved in what we're doing. They understand what we're doing. We're getting feedback from the community. We're getting assistance in testing our new products, our new services. And it's part of our transparency and our desire to provide the level of service that this community deserves. Couple other things. We also have our Community Connect meetings coming up again in May. And this is where we basically meet in various parts of the, of the community, trying to bring everybody together that has interest in transit. And again, sharing what we're doing and getting feedback so that we can do a better job. You know, Toby talked about the bus rodeo. And the bus rodeo is on March ninth, and it's a competition for bus drivers and mechanics, and mechanics. The winners of our local bus rodeo then go to an international bus rodeo in San Antonio this year, and I think that's at the end of March. But I think the interesting thing is Tammy's participating and Greg is participating. Toby and I participated before. We're going to have a competition on, on March the ninth, a competition just for our executive team. It'll be a shortened route that we'll, that we'll participate in. So if you have an opportunity, I mean, this is a great event in terms of the morale of our team. And it's even better because our executives are participating. And as Toby said, the, the T S Ms and the operators really get a kick out of seeing us try to operate these huge buses through these cones. And Toby kind of lightly said killing cones, but those cones represent hazards out there on the street, okay? And, and it's serious about hitting a cone. And we're all, we're going to practice and we're going to be ready. And, and hopefully you'll get an opportunity to attend that. Also, on March eighteenth is Transit Workers Appreciation Day. And we have many things scheduled here at the organization to recognize our transit workers and the great job that they do for this community. This is a committed team. It's, it gives me great pleasure and satisfaction to work with this team, to see how committed they are to providing the service that we need to be providing to this community. So I think that's the, that's the extent of my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Stewart? Great job, Chuck. Great report. Things are really doing well. There's not a lot to nitpick over. So we're just very impressed with you and your team, and sorry to be losing you, but we understand. So this item was presented for information purposes only. We will then move on to number fifteen, which is call for future dates. Ms. Bennett, will you give a summary of upcoming board and committee meeting dates?
Yes, the next Safety and Security Committee meeting will be held on March thirteenth. The next Operations Committee, as well as Audit Finance and Administration Committee meetings, will be held on March twenty-first. The next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on April eighteenth, with all meetings beginning at eight thirty a.m.
Thank you for that information. On to number sixteen, adjournment to executive session. I will request a motion and a second that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal, confidential, or privileged matters as permitted under by state Development Board Policy Chapters Ten, D. Closed Records, D-one Legal, D-two Real Estate, D-seven Purchasing and Contracts, and D-ten Auditors. Ms. Bennett? Oops, I need a motion and a second.
The move. Second.
Ms. Bennett, will you please pull the board?
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Yes.
The motion passed.